Okay. I have the agenda up. Are you able to see the agenda for?
I actually have it on my phone, so yes, I can.
Yes.
So we'll go ahead and we'll start, we'll call the order, the meeting for the Youth of Health Council, the May meeting. Roll call, there won't be enough here, we'll just note the people on the call and we'll make sure we include that in the agenda. Do you want to go ahead and make a motion to begin this month's meeting?
So moved.
I'll take that as a motion to start the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Donna, I'm assuming you're, you're aye on that one too?
Aye.
Alright, so the motion is passed, we can go ahead and begin the meeting. Do you have, Angelica, do you have the meeting notes up for April 2021?
Yeah, I'm gonna stop this year and then open up the minutes.
Okay. So again, I welcome, welcome everybody to the meeting. If you want to go ahead and look at either two things, you can either look at the meeting notes that she forwarded to us via email, or you can look at the screen. Angelica, just feel free to kind of scroll through at your leisure on that side. I think you can scroll through the next little bit there. Alright, well, I've read, just kind of finishes up reviewing the meeting notes. Is there anyone would like to make a motion to approve the April 2021 meeting notes?
Hector, I just do have one question I can do, either ask to hear or ask it later, but on the senior graduation, did we, didn't we discuss, or did we also discuss any other Bloomfield graduates aside from those at the high school and the gym?
I believe we did.
Okay.
There was some follow-up with that one, Roger, if I recall. And now that we have Mr. Jones on the call, we can ask her about it as well, but there may be some changes to that based on, based on some stuff today. So I noticed it's on the agenda today.
Yeah, I just, I could have raised it here or raised it in the agenda, but I thought, I thought we did talk about it, but I wasn't positive.
Um, Angelica, unless there's been anything earth-shattering, I'm assuming there's been some major changes since the last meeting with respect to graduation, but if I'm wrong, you let me know.
Oh yeah, there is some changes. It's not going to be like it was last year with the drive-through. If you have a plan for in-person, I can go over more details, information that I know of for the Bloomfield High School graduation for this year.
I'm gonna stop you there, just because, you know, as it pertains to the meeting notes, I think maybe we just, like I said, we kind of leave it out, Roger, and we kind of talk about it a little bit on this call.
Okay, that's fine.
And then we'll go from there, because I believe we talked about money associated with that as well.
Yep.
So, thanks for bringing that up, Roger.
Okay, I'll move approval of the minutes then.
Anyone second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, and the ayes have it, so the meeting notes are approved. We can move on to the next piece. So, old business. Angelica, do you want to start talking about the youth services updates?
Yes, I want to just pull up our youth services spreadsheet, so you can kind of have a flow to go through as I go through the list. I'm just pulling it up and, um, so we're just gonna do an overview of our youth services programs that we have here. I'm just gonna scroll up to the top. So this is for the month of April, all the events that we did. I'm just gonna have Tiffany start with just overview of JRB, and they will break down the rest of the youth services updates for the program. Yeah.
So JRB has been flowing well. We've been having a nice study piece of cases coming in and out. Mostly things having to do with outside of school. Currently, we did just get into new cases with intakes coming up soon. We had mentor sessions start for one individual, and I'm in the process of referring another for counseling, individual counseling. There's no family services cases at this time.
For our foster care support network, we are continuing to do a combination of in-person and virtual activities. We had our family event this, this month, at the end of the month, it was a tie-dye event, and we had a good turnout for that event as well. We just really try to get creative for the types of activities that we provide for the families to do virtually and in-person as well. Tiffany, I wanted to have you do the two, the main highlights for your police group and the sunbeams.
Sure, the police and youth group, that group has been going very great. They had a nice session called the Table Talk Event, which we invited the parents to join, and they had a nice discussion about how, oh, sorry, just drew a blank. So they, yes, they had a nice discussion about how the community and the police department can merge and union, and had great topics about even things going on in the news and in other states and towns, and they were able to keep a nice focus, so that way it didn't feel negative at all, and just looking at the positives and being able to highlight what great relationship Bloomfield has with our youth and our own community. So that there's no tension there. But the parents, I got a lot of great feedback from the parents, and the kids were into the discussion. So it went very well. Last week, they did a tour of the police department, and they're there again tonight, doing some more hands-on activities. And for the sunbeam girls group, that group is going well as well. This month, they focused a lot about mental health. Within youth, they talked about anxiety, depression, ways to see the signs in your body. They even touched on, we had a topic about my body is changing and am I ready? And that was just focusing on them learning how to love and respect themselves and knowing their worth. Especially with all the temptations and peer pressure that goes around within the young people, just how to protect themselves.
Project 330 is our leadership group. This group, we have them focus on a lot on team building, and we also have, for the month of April, we had a presentation, a pre-recorded presentation from Dynamic Influence, where it talks about the dangers of vaping, and it's, gives a historical background around how vaping started and how to protect yourself and make smarter decisions. And this is a combination that we had, a lot of our other youth services programs participate in this online recorded session as well. And we actually did another big planning, we are having, um, an event next week for, with kickball with the youth. And we actually have them focusing on the social issue of child hunger, so they will be participating in raising non-perishable items for our, our local food bank, and we explain to the youth about the importance of our food bank here in town, and how many families utilize the program, and how often, and the beauty is, we have it in our own building, so they got to see which items that we were in need of, so we put together a list that they're gonna work together as a team to get donations within themselves internally to provide for our food bank as well. And the kids really got excited about it once they saw the food bank and how it's, you know, it can be full at times and empty at times, and how this is a really need in our town as well. Our tribe is our young mentor, young mentor leadership group, they had their last session, maybe had a final overview of all the things they talked about within the mentoring topics throughout the entire session. Kings is our after-school program. This program is 100% virtual, so we've been have, we've been getting real creative in terms of these types of activities that we lead. We have a presenter from U of M Merge that does our leadership activities on Wednesdays, so she guides the kids in discussion about how to be a leader and self-esteem and building that up within themselves. And we also did the vaping presentation with this group as well, and we try to do every Friday, a different fun, interactive activity that they can participate in to make it fun, so it's not all, all the time, serious learning, because I know for this program, Monday, Tuesday, they focus on our academic portion with the middle school, and Wednesday through Friday, we incorporate more fun activities and team-building activities for this session. For it to be all virtual, it's had a good turnout, we have about 15 kids enrolled, and we get at least half of those kids consistently logging in, so having them logging in is half the battle. Something new that we started for the first time, we've been trying to get this up off the ground, it's a parent, parent series. Last month, we had a whole month dedicated towards the April Parent Wellness Series, and we had a lot of great feedback from the families, we had a consistent, consistent family members to show up for this virtual session. This was led by a clinician from, I'm gonna blink on her name, from Merge Behavior Health?
Latoya Watson.
Latoya Watson. And she did a really good job in terms of going over the different topics, it talked about working on fitness, how to balance the two pandemics, and a lot of these parents, they opened up and shared their struggles and concerns, and a lot of them wanted, wanted the sessions to continue, so we're trying to strategize ways that we can incorporate more parent series throughout the school year for, for these parents to have, but overall, it was a really good turnout, and I do look forward to using this presenter as well for future topics. And this is also something that was new and never done, so to have parents participate and show up, that is such a huge thing for the department and the community as well. For admin, it's, the admin section is just different meetings that we, myself and Tiffany, as a tenant throughout the month of April, and some of those meetings consisted of the portrait of a graduate and our RAC meetings, and there's also, it was a conference on foster care and adoption, had different strategies, a two-day virtual conference. So myself and staff are also part of this meeting as well, to get new tips that we can add into and incorporate with our foster care program as well. Did anybody have any questions or need more information on any of our youth services program activities for the month of April?
I was just wondering, for the benefit of the mayor and councilman Kirk, approximately, how many young people do you believe we serve?
Overall, for all of these programs in total?
Yeah.
I can kind of give you a quick rough estimate, let me just go through.
Say about 60, around 60.
About 60. And we have been having smaller group sizes, our maximum are about seven to 10, based on our program size that we have for all of our groups to be in compliance with COVID regulations and social distancing.
Thank you.
Angelica and Tiffany, I'm gonna ask John to kind of jump in on this one too, because I have questions about the JRB again. So, let me, let me ask John first. Are we, do we have physically anyone back in the schools knowing that schools are back, I guess, in session? Well, let me not say in session, because that, that makes it seem like we weren't doing anything before. What I would say, in-person learning, right? Do we have any officers in this?
I don't know if you cut out, but we have, we have officers that will sometimes go through the school, or walk through the property, or park and do their paperwork in the parking lot, so that there's a presence. We don't have anybody assigned to the schools currently.
Okay, alright.
I guess obstacles we have right now. We have an officer short, and what they wind up doing is having to strip from some of the support service, service functions, so that the road is covered. I hired four or five already, and I believe that we're looking to fill seven academy seats over the next six or seven months. When that winds up, when that winds up, I guess concluding their training, then we'll wind up being, having the ability to staff those positions, if that's what we're gonna do in the future.
Excellent, thank you. So going back to the JRB piece of it, how many referrals are we getting from the school versus like an officer or from the police? Like, how's the breakout? Is it 50/50? Is it, you know, for at least for school, or?
For the school has just been occasionally, because as you know, school was not meeting in person, so the couple we did get from the school were more in regards to juency. But now that they're back in person, I'm not sure if that may change, but for right now, we've mostly been getting cases from either the PD or the juvenile court.
Gotcha. And are, are they domestic, or, you know, is it like?
More fighting or stealing.
Gotcha.
Are usually the main two.
Okay. Alright, thank you. That was my question about the JRB. With respect to the parent group and Angelica, I continue to say that every single meeting, I think it is crucial that we get that network group, or that networking group going, and I'm, I'm happy to hear that it's going well. Ideally, I'd like it to grow organically, meaning you guys kind of start the process, and then eventually it becomes its own, like it kind of, it handles itself, right? And you guys are just facilitators, taking ideas from that group, and then developing programs, or parent programs, based on that feedback. So, love everything that we're doing right now. I like how it's kind of moving in that direction, hoping that we can kind of continue, a continued focus on that, in addition to the other things that we all do, right? In the future years, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Does anyone have any other questions in regards to programming for youth services before we move on to the next agenda item?
Alright, so I'm gonna take silence to me, we can move on to the next subject, which is youth, the summer youth employment.
For summer youth employment, the application, the original deadline was scheduled for May 1st. We received the notification that the deadline for the app, pre, pre-application is May 14th, the application is through the Capital Workforce Partners website. For our town, we are accepting 14 and 15-year-olds for the learning enrichment piece of the program, and 16 and 17-year-olds will be participating in the actual hands-on worksite placements, where they be placed in different departments. Right now, we do have a few town departments that will be participating and taking on a few of those students, and we are still in the process of working on additional work sites to fulfill all of those slots. We did receive a letter stating that we have a contingent 22 slots, so the way it'll be broken down, 11 slots would be for the 14 and 15-year-olds, and for the 16 and 17-year-olds, we have 11 slots for those students. We don't have access for, to the applications until after the deadline closes in May 14th. Last time I checked, we had, um, over 70 that have applied for the program. And I'm quite sure that one's about last week, I accidentally skipped the numbers, I'm quite sure we'll get a lot more between now and the closing of the application on the 14th. We do have a kickoff meeting for this Friday, where they're gonna give us more guidance in terms of capital workforce, in terms of how the program's gonna work. Last year, we had a couple of different components. We had the work site component, and the hands-on learning piece for the students in person. And it also included 10 hours of job readiness skills virtually, and then there was a mental health component for a one hour a week. So I'll learn more about how they want us to break down the requirements for this year. I know the last conversation, they wanted to keep the mental health piece included, because that was so important for the youth with everything going on. Last year, they used the village, they had an instructor that came on every week to the call with our group in Bloomfield, and did a guided discussion around different mental health topics as well. Last year, we used a different system called a Career Edge, where it had a lot of the different work platforms in terms of applications, cover letter, interviewing tips. We used that online platform that was provided through Capital Workforce. So as I know more information at the next meeting, I'll have more to share about how the layout will look for, for this summer. It is a six-week position, six-week position, they do 120 hours for the duration of the program, with the anticipation start date July 1st. It's advertised from Capital Workforce through, I think, the end of August, well, we end earlier, because the kids go back to school towards the end of August.
So Angelica, question about that then. One of the things that we kind of talked about at the last meeting was the possibility of getting maybe the Chamber of Commerce to get some of their, their members to participate in the program. Are we still working out those details, or is that not something that's gonna happen for this year?
We are still working out those details. We are in a process of working through our insurance liability and seeing which sites we'll be able to have as off, offsites that aren't town departments to have that happen. We will keep it small, because this is our first year having, you know, having the ability to do outside sites, so, um, we're still doing more connected in terms of how that piece will look for outside town worksite.
Did we have a lot of people, or a lot of businesses, like, reach back out and say that they would be interested in participating?
From my last conversation with Kamala, I know we had, it was mentioned in a meeting with the Chamber of Commerce, and there were some businesses that expressed interest in it. I'm not sure which ones, we were just waiting on our insurance liability before we went to move forward with that process. So we will be connecting to see which business, businesses were interested, and see to make sure that we'll have, it'll be a good fit for the students to get a good learning opportunity for the summer.
Beautiful. Even if we don't get participation from, you know, non-town entities this year, I still think laying the groundwork for that is important, and actually having companies or businesses come to us and saying that they're interested in it, I think it's important too, so that's, that's a nice thing here.
Yes.
Angelica, are we anticipating that this is gonna be all in-person?
Yes.
Good.
So we're anticipating all in-person, we have a small enough group size, restrictions are being, you know, loosened up within, as these months go by. I know May, the restrictions are changing, so we do anticipate full in-person for, for everything, for our learning group and for our worksite group as well.
Excellent. Any other questions from the group? Alright. We can move on to the Youth of Health Council budget, and Angelica, I think, unless I'm, unless I'm hearing things differently, I think maybe the senior graduation and the update to the budget might be go hand-in-hand, so we may want to cover the two together?
Yes, they do, because I know the last meeting, we discussed about using, using the remaining funds from our budget to go towards the senior graduation supplies as needed, based upon requests of the schools that we have. I know, I did get follow-up, last, last meeting, we discussed about how many anticipated seniors that would be graduating. I did connect with Lisa White at the high school, they're anticipating 120 students to graduate from Bloomfield High School. The last time I connected with gyms, they had about four to five Bloomfield residents that'll be graduating this, this senior year from, from high school. So with that, some of the things, I'll do the same as last year in terms of the kids that had the blankets, and it had the blankets, the bags, and there was some other items in there. Some mugs and the lanyards that we had from last year. I did put in the order for the blankets, because that did take some time to get in, because we have so many to order. So I did put that in to, um, to provide for the gyms' graduation students and the Bloomfield High School students. I didn't, I still, I haven't received any other additional requests. We do have some funds for other grants to use, if there's some additional requests that are requested, but I haven't received any requests beyond the gyms', gyms coordinator for the graduation reach-out. And I know the high school, they're doing a couple items as well for the students that they're gonna hand out before graduation. So the plans of what, what's gonna happen is, for the graduation, we're gonna go to the school with our kids to, to deliver the stuff when they do their, their pre-graduation, pre-graduation, gosh, not training, pre-graduation, that they're gonna do before rehearsal. So we're gonna go up there on the 16th to hand out our stuff to all of the students that are present for the rehearsal, and then we'll leave, we'll figure out a way to coordinate if they miss rehearsal, to make sure they get their items as well. Last year, what we did was, we had them come directly to us to pick up their kits, if they, therefore, pick up for everything.
Gotcha. So we're still talking about the, at least, the same amount of dollars being spent, we're just, it's being done differently, correct? Because they actually, they're not doing like a drive-through, they're doing in-person graduation?
Yeah, so, the way that it was presented to me, they're gonna do it in-person. I'm not too familiar with the courtyard, they're gonna, they're gonna use the courtyard after high school, and it's kind of gonna be a one-way in, one-way out, so I'm not sure how they're breaking down families coming in, and what's the, the max group size for that, that area. I'm just trying to, I'm not sure exactly where the courtyard that they're pertaining to, on the grounds of a high school, what they are planning to do in-person graduation.
Yeah, so, for those who aren't familiar with the high school, the courtyard is actually, it's accessible in a couple of different locations, primarily through the library, but it's actually a nice little space that they have, and it's a good amount of space. Ms. Jones, correct me if I'm wrong, and you may have, have some details about this that I don't, that I don't, but I guess I'll share with the group, what I know is that they're limiting the number of, obviously, all the students are gonna be located and allowed to come. It, I think the number of people you can come with each graduate is four people, and they'll be socially distanced, and the graduates themselves will be seated in, I guess, like a patio area, where, where when you first exit the library, there's like a little patio where, you know, they have seating and everything available. I'm sure all that stuff will be cleared out, and the graduates will be there along with all the dignitaries, so.
That is exactly what I was told. As far as how many people can come per graduate.
Going back to my other que, my original question though, doesn't the Board of Education have a list of Bloomfield students who are attending other schools like Crex Schools, who would also be graduating? I would think they would have to be registered here in order to be attending, you know, schools like the Magnet Schools, etc.
So this is where we need your help, Mrs. Jones, and in, last year when we had this problem, or, let me not say problem, it was just, we were trying to figure out how many students in Bloomfield were graduating, and that included Crex Schools, Magnet Schools Charter, you know, those kind of things. We wanted to, to be fair and equitable across the board, everybody got a gift, and I say that in quotations, from Social Youth Services. So, last year, Dr. Silver was able to give us a number. We're not necessarily looking to, to get the names, we just need a number, so that we can order the correct stuff, and then we can put out the all-points to say, hey, there's something for you, please come to Social Youth Services or wherever, where you can pick up this item.
So, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, she's not here anymore, but Jason might be able to give us that, so if, and if, Angelica, if you can just email me that, and I'll be sure to, to ask him when I meet with him tomorrow.
Okay.
How, how can we get that? Because she might have, he might have been part of that email chain from last year. And it might be the same contact people that she used to, to get, to get the data for you for, for the last year's students. And it might be the same contact people that she used to to get to get the data for you for the for the last year's students. Hello?
I'm here, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll send out that email, because I can't remember the number we had last year that were Bloomfield residents that attended other schools in different districts. Okay.
So I mean, because because it's really hard to do, like, the Crex one is a little bit easier, because it's because we can call Crex and do it that way. It's the students who go to, like, private schools. That's where it gets kind of tricky, because you you don't know which private school they go to. So you would like, are are we calling around to all the schools? So it gets kind of tricky.
And I can also look on, Kishma, on my end, if there is an email thread that was from Dr. Silver that had a certain breakout.
Yeah.
Find that, I can forward that as well as another guy that maybe Jason connected with to get that the information.
Thank you.
All right, so that's all good stuff about the senior graduation. Hopefully, next year, things will be a little bit more back to normal, and we can figure out how we can support our students and our enrolled, either with or without Bloomfield, but as long as they're Bloomfield residents, support them some way more traditionally like we have in the past. So we'll just kind of continue to be flexible, and we'll move forward with our plans for this year, so. Angelica, did you have anything else that you want to talk about the the budget itself?
Um, no, that was it. It's just once I get the the final number, I'll, you know, I'll make sure I have enough account for for all of our senior graduates. And I'll get a variety of things to put in those kits to provide to the senior senior graduating class, and that will close out the balance remaining for the Youth Adult Council funds for this fiscal year.
Excellent. Well, we talked about new business and the senior graduation. Do we want to talk about the Portrait of a Graduate?
Yes, I'm not sure if everybody on the call is familiar with the Portrait of a Graduate. It is an initiative that the Bloomfield District is actually starting up to look at different ways that we can highlight skills and assets for the twenty-first century that the kids will need to have. And they will incorporate from earliest, early pre-K to grade twelve. So the idea behind it is that a youth that attends Bloomfield Public Schools, let's say they start with us in pre-K all the way through grade twelve, they will develop all these different assets and skills to help them be competitive in the twenty-first century. So right now, we're in a planning process, and there's a select group of committee members that is planning on what that will look like, how we can get different people from the community and different organizations and the school. And they're tailing, will be tailing their curriculum as well to incorporate those components. So this, for instance, an example of time management, like, what would that look like for early childhood student? What would that look like for a student that's in high school? So we actually got asked to be a part of this committee for the Youth Services Department. So what I'm doing for the Youth Services Department is, once they finally finalize what it would look like in terms of what particular traits and characteristics and different things that they want to do for the Portrait of a Graduate, how to include that into Youth Services programs. So we'll be weaving in these ideas into our existing programs and new programs to make sure we're all in a, all in it together, to make sure our students are getting the best that they have for programs out of school, after school, in school as well.
And Angelica, you you explained that very well, very well. I appreciate you. And we also reached, just to add on to it, what we did as a district was we reached out to parents. So each school had a parent Zoom, and the parents had a chance to pick what they felt were their top ten or fifteen competencies that they think that their students should have once they leave Bloomfield Public Schools. We also met with stakeholders, faith-based partners, staff members. Anybody that that we could meet with, we met with to, so that everybody had a say in this. We even met with the students. And then we are going to compile that list to to come up with the top fifteen. And then, like Angelica said, we are working with our partners to weave this into the work that they do with our students in Bloomfield.
And this, that presentation was given by Mr. White at the high school to our staff. We had a staff meeting. So our staff as well got a chance to answer the survey questions and give feedback in terms of no areas of improvement and what they felt was important for kids to graduate. So it's good to have our staff being able to be part of that as well, too. Just to get their voice from a Youth Services perspective and after-school lens of what is important for for students to have in graduating. It's an exciting project. I'm excited to see how all will come together and how we can build upon it for our Bloomfield residents and students.
Is this going to include the non-public pre-K as well as the public pre-K?
I'm not sure for the answer for that one, Kishma. Do you know if it will include non-public pre-K as well for this initiative?
Um, I'm not sure, because the goal was to have a timeline on what it it looks like for a Bloomfield public student that went to the Bloomfield Public School System, what that would look like. So I'm not sure that that was included, but I will definitely ask and get back to you.
Yeah, because a number of our religious communities do have preschools, including the congregational church that I attend. So it would be useful to include them, I would think, if if we if we could.
They might have already been included, because we did reach out to faith-based
Yeah, I heard you say that.
In our community. So we did reach out to them, and they had their own meeting, and they were able to answer the the survey questions as well.
Hi, hi, this is Camilla. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I've been having technical issues all evening trying to connect, so. I, is there a way that perhaps the Youth Adult Council can participate on the survey? I guess that would be a question for Christopher.
Oh, I don't see why not.
Okay. It'd be great to have the their their input.
Yep, so if you can just send me, because I promise you, I'm gonna forget, I promise. Just just shoot me the email and and I and I can share share the link.
Okay. And do you do you know if they engaged town council members as well?
Yes.
Okay.
From my understanding, yes, that was part of the plan.
Okay, that's great.
I don't know if I can jump in, but yes, they did, and they also made a presentation at the last council meeting.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions in regards to the Portrait of a Graduate for Bloomfield?
When do they think that they can actually begin a program like that? Do they have a target start date?
It's not really a program. It's more of a of of a system. It's more of a strategy that will be implemented in the work that we do within our schools and with our partners.
Okay, do they have a target implementation date?
I'm gonna say to be determined, because I don't want to put a date out there that's that that I'm assuming, or that I'm not, or that I'm not a hundred percent sure of. But we're trying to, so we're trying to get all the work done and all the research done and and all the surveys done before school ends.
Oh, wow.
Because we have done a lot of the footwork, like, we have done all the presentations to the families and and everybody that that I said before. Now it's compiling that so that we can now push it back out. That's the hard part.
Sounds like a fair amount of work. Thank you.
No problem.
I agree. Thank you, everyone, for kind of commenting on that one. Definitely looking forward to more info on that, so. Youth Services Staffing Updates.
Yes, so we have two new hires that will be starting for our youth and family worker positions. They will be starting actually tomorrow afternoon with us. So we have two new positions. They are gonna be twenty hours. So we have additional staff that we can incorporate into our new programs, and we can add more people to add into our ideas for, to grow our team as well. Two of those staff, they actually are part of the Bloomfield School District as well. So it's good to have that connection with us extending over to the after-school programming as well. And their positions are year-round, so they'll be with us year-round.
Excellent. Do we know?
This is Camilla again. I'm I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify, they're not new positions. They were vacant positions. The staff are new. One staff is no longer with us, and the other position had been vacant for about a year or so, and we were able to get permission to finally fill it.
Thanks for clarifying on that one. That was actually gonna be my next question, Camilla.
Yeah, I thought that was.
Do we know where we stand with foster care? Do we have a foster care person hired already? Maybe I missed that in the last.
Oh, yeah, we've had a foster care support worker since last year.
Oh, wow, there it is, okay.
Yeah, she's been with us since the fall of last year.
Excellent.
No, since February, I think since February, Angelica.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, right before COVID.
Ah, maybe that's what it is then. Okay. All right.
Yeah.
That, and that must be why I missed that one, just because, you know, at the time it came in, so. But that's good, that's awesome. It seems like we've always had trouble kind of, Tiffany, exclude you from this conversation. We've always had people, you know, kind of rotate through that fairly quickly, right? There's been a fair amount of attrition in that role, so it's nice to hear that we have a little bit of longevity with that at this point, so glad to hear.
And we're finally fully staffed with Youth Services. It's been a long time since we've been able to say that, yeah.
Beautiful.
And with the exception of these two new hires, everyone's been with us for over a year. I think the longest that someone's been with us. Mr. Mitch, he's been there longer than I've been there, so that's over twenty years. So he's got some stability finally.
We share with him. He gets, he gets a lot of stuff through Leisure Services too, though, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, any other questions about the Youth Services Staffing Updates? Any other comments? All right, announcements. If no one has any announcements, what I do want to do is I want to call out a couple of different things. Number one, John, if you want to give us any updates on on the police, that'd be awesome. And then, Mrs. Jones, if you want to give us any updates from from a school perspective that we haven't already spoken of, by all means, please feel free at this point to to kind of jump in.
Some of the things where Tiffany already spoke about the police and youth groups. We're working with the Explorers, Boy Scouts, to to try to get that up and running. I already spoke about in last month's meeting that it's been challenging to get the kids to sign on and really be engaged on these June Explorer meetings. It's really more of an interactive thing, but we have that scheduled for this month to see how many of these kids we're gonna wind up bringing back in. Summer is usually a lull for us, so we're gonna try to get there for the next few weeks. Really push trying to recruit for Explorers. So if anybody here has kids they can push in our direction, that we can get them on board so that we have a good group to work with throughout the summertime, that would be greatly appreciated. A lot of our other programming has really been waiting till just about right now, May. We're gonna be able to start opening up some of the activities. So some is to be determined as we figure out what our budget looks like and and our staffing.
Excellent, thank you. Mrs. Jones, anything from the school?
Um, nothing that hasn't been said. I think we talked about early start last time. That is still happening. There there have been no changes to that. We're just, right now, the registration is open. Parents can sign up in power school, or they can call the school, and their child teacher can also go in power school and sign their children up. So there's many ways that children could get signed up if parents are saying that they have a hard time logging in or anything like that. The high school is also having an early start program. They're having a credit recovery program. Gyms is as well. Gyms, I think, is virtually with maybe like a couple of days in the last week, the kids being bussed in, only because those kids lives all over. So so it's a little bit harder in the summertime. And they will all have, well, the K through eight will have academics in the in the morning time and enrichment in the afternoon, because we we want to make sure that the students are having fun, because it is, because it's still summertime, and they have been in this crazy space for an entire year. So we want to make sure that we incorporate the fun time.
Gotcha.
Right now, that is the only thing that's, oh, no, I'm I'm sorry. Because Angelica spoke about Portrait of the Graduate, and we have early start. I conducted listening tours with families. So we did one, we did one for Wynton Berry, Laurel, and Metta Comet. That was one date. And then there was one for Case and Camps. And then there was one for Gyms and Bloomfield High School. And what that did was I made, I met with the parents. They were able to send me questions prior to. And even if they didn't, whoever logged onto the Zoom, we had a very open conversation. And it was probably like six guiding questions that we really didn't have to use, because the parents were just so excited to have a conversation. And they were very open and were sharing their likes, dislikes, things that they would want to change, how they want to be communicated with, what what they wanted, like, they were just very open and 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 transparent. So that is also being used along with the data from the Portrait of a Graduate to kind of decide what programs will be offered next year to families as well as students. And to kind of build our program so that we're giving our families and our students what they're asking for and not what we think that they want. And that's what I have so far.
Outstanding, thank you.
Sounds good.
Absolutely. All right, unless there's any other announcements, anyone else? Public comments.
So can can I go in public comments?
Feel free.
I just thought this was funny, like, it's just us. Okay, so, um, public comments. My name is Suzette DeBeetham Brown, and I live at twenty-five Fairfield Lanes. I've been a member, a resident in Bloomfield for for over twenty-five years. So I would just like to inform you guys of some things that are going on. I know that we have our last meeting on June first, but some information. June nineteenth, we're gonna have the MLK mural unveiling at the Human Services Building. That's a Saturday. The event starts at eleven AM. The week after that, starting on the twenty-fourth to the twenty-seventh, will be Celebrate Bloomfield. On the twenty-fourth, we'll be having a concert at Rockwell. On the twenty-fifth, all the activities will take place at the Human Services Building, activities for the entire family. On the twenty-sixth, which is that Saturday, we'll be on the town green. A day filled with activities. We'll have a pop-up shop, food trucks. DJ Buck will be with us. Saturday evening will be the Mayor's Celebration Ball. And this year, we're celebrating our students, the young man that won the spelling bee, the students that won the STEM Program sponsored by Otis Elevator, and the young lady that nominated us for the nicest town during 2020. So I'll be celebrating a lot. On Sunday, we're going to have a bike ride with Octagon Bike Club. We're also going to be picnicking at the Philly Pond. So I just wanted to make sure that you all knew what was going on, so hopefully you can help us to spread the word. Hopefully, our residents are getting their vaccines, and they just want to come out, breathe some fresh air, and socialize again. So that's that's our hope, and I just wanted to share that with you all. I also would like Mr. Hector to please give me your call, sir, when you have a minute.
Absolutely.
Do you have my number?
I do not, but I will, I will connect with you after. I'll figure out a way to to get the, you know, unless.
Eight-six-zero-nine-one-three-six-five-two-four, it's public.
You call me off guard. I'm in the car, I'm in the car, hold on.
Here come the calls, Madam Mayor.
It's everybody, listen, everybody else calls, so it's okay.
Follow me, please, when you're ready.
I also just wanted to also remind you that the Um, I also just wanted to also remind you that the Proster Public Library has a building committee. Um they are looking to uh rebuild Proster Library, rebuild and expand. They're also looking to expand the library on um the McMahon-Winton Berry Branch Library. Um you can go out to the Bloomfield Public Library's website and find all the information about that project out there. Thank you for giving me time, I quite, I greatly appreciate it.
Well, we appreciate the commentary and the statements, thank you.
I do have a a hand raise from Rickford. Is there something you wanted to add as well?
Correct, um I can't see everyone for some reason, I think the the agenda.
Yes, because she's screen sharing.
Okay, okay, got you. No, I just, uh, thank you. I just want to add, I know you're talking about funding. And you're talking about ways to, you know, get money for the various programs that you're running, and I know that. Our, the American Rescue um plan that was passed and and the the various towns are going to be receiving funding. I know part of the discussion we were having on the the council at a uh council level, I know the mayor was talking about this. Where we start having those conversations early. Uh and with the various stakeholders within the community, because everyone is going to be coming uh and putting their hands up. And I think it's important uh for you guys to also to be ahead of the curve. And to also try to find ways to outline and figure out exactly what sort of funding you may need. Uh for our our youth within the the town. I know you mentioned we have sixty. But can we, would would it be possible to expand that if you have more funding? I mean, those are all possibilities, but just be aware that that's going on and it's, as soon as we have more information, we'll provide it to you. Right now, it's basically. It's just a discussion phase, we haven't received anything from the state. That will come through from the federal government, right down to uh the state of Connecticut, and they're going to start allocating the funds, and I think. Right now, they're talking within a three-year um timeframe of of sending that money to the various communities, so. We want to make sure that all of these programs that do really well for our young people are also at the table. Uh expressing their concerns for funding, so I just wanted to get that out there.
Is there any timeline um for when the town is going to start to make those decisions?
No, we we don't, because we haven't really received any guidance from the state, but I think it's important for you all to start. Formulating and thinking about what would you like to see in the various programs that you're running.
Can we put that on the agenda for our next meeting?
Absolutely.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Funding for programming, okay.
Excellent. Um or announcements, I know we're past that, but any other co- of public comments?
Just one more thought on that last point, um because a number, some of our members aren't here today. And can we just put that out to them so they don't wait, so we highlight that for them rather than just including it in the minutes or in the agenda for next time? So that they can start thinking about it as well.
I could send out a separate email before our next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So unless there's any other public comments, we are actually done for today, there's no more agenda items. Uh would anyone like to make a motion to end uh this month's meeting?
Sure, Hector, also move.
There we go, anyone second?
My second.
There you go, uh all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we are all set. Thanks, everybody, for joining, and Madam Mayor, I'll be reaching out to you shortly.
Thank you very much, good night, everyone.
Bye-bye.